Sharon, Sharon worked overtime all weekend.
Uh-oh.
Made them. And they made a bunch of brothers and sisters.
I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 6th, meeting of the City of Algoma Common Council. I'd like the clerk to take the role, please.
Mayor.
Dashlet.
Here.
Cleveland. Gressel. Weez. Meverden.
Here.
Pabick. Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, because of the COVID-19, which everybody is aware of, and things that are going on, and also with the social distancing, we've made some changes here at Algoma City Hall to publish this meeting tonight. So just going to turn it over to the Administrator Jared Hine to give us a little overview on how this is going to go and what's taking place. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, we are with the COVID-19 issue, conducting this meeting partially via the Zoom app. We have about half of the council here and half of the council at home. And so for the council members at home and the couple of staff members we have, if you have a comment that you want to make or speak, just raise your hand. The mayor will be able to see it on screen. If it's not on screen here, I will let him know. I have an iPad right here that I am looking at. So I will bring to his attention that you are wishing to speak. We don't currently have anyone from the public here right now, but if someone were to come here during the public comment period, then they would go up to the podium as per the usual. So are there any questions? No. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Since there are no questions, let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. And I'll accept a motion for approval or changes to the order of the agenda as published. Move by Lee. Second by Jake.
Second.
Second by Jake. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Approval of the meeting minutes from March 2nd, March 17th, and March 30th. I'll accept a motion. Move by Scott.
Second.
Second.
Second by Eugene. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Aye.
Public comment, we don't have anybody this evening under public comment, so we're going to skip that. And then we're going to go into general bills and credit card payments. You should all have those on your iPads if you want to look through them. Does anybody have any questions on any of the bills or the credit card payments? Point 7A. Oh, well, I'll get that right after the bills.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see.
Point of order, under public comment, we also have an A for the Arbor Day.
Correct. I just don't have it in front of me right now. So I didn't memorize the proclamation, John. And if I do get it before this meeting's done, I will read it. But otherwise, we will move on. Okay, getting back to the bills, general bills and credit card. Any questions on any of them? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the bills and the credit card payments.
So moved.
Move by John. Second by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Gressel.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. Conference attendance, we do have one request for the city Administrator Jared Hine to attend the UWGB Clerks and Treasure Institutes on July 12th to the 17th in Green Bay. I'll accept a motion. Move by Scott.
Thanks.
Second by Jackie. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. I'm going to ask the council tonight if it's okay if we suspend with reading the minutes. If anybody objects to that, I'll have them read. Otherwise, there aren't that many minutes. So is it okay with everybody if we just suspend reading the minutes?
Yes.
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 Eugene, okay with that? Okay, I saw the thumbs up from Eugene. Perfect. Okay. That being said. Okay, sure, sure. Then we will go right into the old business. Under old business tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance 825-2020, and that's amending section 101-21 in the Code of Ordinances relating to the city plant commission. That's where we decided we were going to reduce the size of the planning commission, simply because it was just too hard to get a quorum. So Jamie presented that. We did a little homework on it, and we decided to reduce the size. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that ordinance change. Move by Lee.
Second.
Second by Eugene. Any questions or comments? Let's do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Meverden. Pabick.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on then to ordinance 826-2020. That is amending to section 2-106 of the Code of Ordinances. What this is, is merging the Marina Committee with the Public Works Committee. This is the second reading and adoption. It was felt by the council that because of the two committees actually being managed by one person, it made it a lot easier to just merge the two committees under one. And then that way, they're meeting on the same night during the same meeting. It doesn't mean that we have to have a separate meeting, and it's a lot easier than to find people to serve. So this again is coming from a recommendation from the Marina Manager and also the Finance and Personnel.
So moved.
Move by Jake. Second by Scott. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Gressel.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. We now have some operator license, license period from April 6th to June 30th of 2021. Samantha Ramos and Scott Osborne. Those went through your committee, Scott?
We did not discuss them. We didn't have a meeting.
Okay, okay. The background checks were done, everything, correct, chief? Okay, all right. I'm taking there was no questions on those, so I would approve a... Take a motion to approve those.
I'll move.
Move by Scott.
So moved.
Move by Scott, second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed. Did you get that motion and second on that? Because she's out of the room. It was motion by Scott.
I got it here.
Okay. And then there is a transient merchant peddler's license for Real Enterprises 201 Steel Street, and that's for a food trailer. I'll accept a motion to approve that.
So moved.
So moved.
Move by Mitch.
Second.
Second by Kevin.
Whatever.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Deprary Class B license for the Algoma Penguin Baseball, June 5th, June 26th, July 1st, July 9th, July 14th, and July 21st. Move by Jake.
Second.
Second by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Violence Intervention Project, it's the VIP Smokehouse Jamboree, June 27th, 2020, at Legion Park. Motion, Mitch. Motion by Mitch. Second by Lee. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Motion to approve the conditional hiring of Tanner Carmen as a part-time police officer.
So, Mayor, if I can interject.
So moved.
Hang on a second. The chief would like to interject here.
So when we put this in, he was still waiting for his background check. His background check, and so all the psychological tests have come through. He's passed everything. So it's not a conditional hire. It should be a hire for part-time.
A hire?
A hire.
Okay. Did everybody on the council hear that? That this is not a conditional hire?
Yep.
Okay, so if you want to make a motion to hire him then? Who? Kevin made the motion before? Who's second?
Second.
Mitch's second. Any questions on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution 1008-2020 authorizing the Algoma Utilities to voluntarily contribute $3,052 to the American Transmission Company for additional capital needs.
So moved.
Move by Jake. Second by John. Who seconded it? Jackie? Jackie seconded it. Any questions or comments? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution 1009-2020, that's authorizing a spillman cooperation agreement with Kiwanee County. That's something that we have to have for the police department, and that renewal came up. We just need to authorize the agreement to be signed, so I'm looking for a motion. Move by Scott.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Scott. Second by John. John, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution 1010-2020 authorizing the purchase of a new pickup truck for the Parks and Recreation Department. Sarah or Kevin?
Sarah can go ahead.
Sarah, do you want to give a little background? I know you included all your background with your proposal in the minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at that. The only reason we're moving on this right now is I'll let Sarah address that and why we were not ordering out. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, so about a month and a half ago, we started getting bids or estimates from several different area car dealerships in ordering a new truck. I asked for estimates from Algoma Motors, Jorns up in Sturgeon Bay, or I'm sorry, in Kiwanee and Jim Olson in Sturgeon Bay, asking if they had trucks on the lot and also for trucks that would need to be ordered. And I included those prices in the memo that I typed up. Jorns and Jim Olson did not have any trucks that would fit what we needed for the parks. Algoma Motors did have one on the lot, as well as one that they could order. We are asking, we're recommending option four, which would be to pick, to purchase a truck from Algoma Motors. It's a little bit more expensive than one what we could order, but we had a deadline of March 26th that we would have to get an order in for the 2000, I believe it's the 2019 models. And so with the COVID-19 virus, that we were worried that we would be having delays because of parts that were made in China and South Korea at that time when we were getting these estimates. And then we were worried that perhaps that we wouldn't be able to have it in time for the summer when we need it. So it would be replacing one of our old blue trucks that we were using for watering. We'll just dispose of that truck or put it, get rid of it maybe by silent auction. And this would be replacing one of the three trucks that we have. So does anybody have any questions?
I think you should also let everybody know that ordering a new truck's probably going to take eight to nine months.
Yeah, that's kind of what we were told. Well, it was, it was at the time when I talked to them, the middle of March, it was, I think, up to 12 weeks. But that was before everything else that's been happening. Now that we're hard hit in Detroit, it could be even longer. So we were doubtful that we would get one this summer if we had to order.
This is part of the budget of the capital outlay. As far as how we're going to finance it, that we'll worry about at the Finance and Personnel meeting, whether or not we're going to lease it or whether we're going to buy it or what.
The blue one is in stock?
Yes, yes.
How many miles a year do we put on roughly for the Parks and Recs?
Sarah, did you hear that question?
No, I didn't.
Do you know, just ballpark, how many miles are we putting on annually for the Parks and Recs truck?
Um, I don't have that figure off the top of my head. We do feel that we need three trucks. Since I've been in this position, we took on the flower project or watering the flowers. So we do need a flower truck solely dedicated for that, to keep a water tank on. And then Mike would have a truck, and then the part timers, we would send out with the third truck. So it would, you know, if we did not have this third truck, it would be Mike having to stop what he was doing and drive the part timers and drop them off. It would be a lot of running around. I do not know exactly how many miles we put on a year, but this truck would stay in the area most likely.
What are the other two trucks that we have? So what does a fleet consist of if we buy this one?
For the parks, we have a red truck. That truck has a cab on it. So in the wintertime, I do take that truck to do the shopping in Green Bay. And then we have the white truck, which is one that we got, I believe, in 2016. And then we have the flower truck, which is the blue truck that we were replacing. And then we have another older blue truck that we use for the parks.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Sarah?
And remind us, Sarah, how old the truck is that we're replacing?
It's a 1987, and...
But we got our money's worth.
Yes, we really did. We ran it into the ground. It's in pretty bad shape. There's, you know, it's needing new tires at this point. And the interior, the chair, we have to put in an extra cushion because the seat is all chewed up. So it's, it's, it's served its, well past its useful life, I would say. Sarah? I got a question, Sarah. Yeah. Could we, could we take the new truck and give that one to you or Mike? Then take one of the other ones and give that to the flowers? Because it's not putting out a lot of miles, just hauling that tank? Well, the red truck will become the new flower truck, and that is because it's a three-quarter ton. So that one, we didn't feel like we want to spend extra money to buy another cab for one of the newer trucks for me to take to Green Bay. So in the wintertime, I'll take the red truck still. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Move by Kevin.
Second.
By Mitch. Roll call vote since we're spending money.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Gressel.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yep.
Pabick.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yep.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 1011-2020, that's authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper. Matt?
Yeah, this is the same thing, I guess. Well, not nearly close to the same thing, but kind of fell in order like the truck. This went through Public Works, our Public Works Committee, and was moved first and second to go into finance. And with the, am I not loud enough? I'm sorry. With everything going on, actually McQueen or Bruce Equipment, same company, has a machine that's available that we could get instead of waiting the seven to eight months to receive a brand new one. They have a machine that is brand new that a municipality backed out of, and we have the opportunity to put our name on it. With that being said, they would like us to put our name on it. Otherwise, there's another municipality that would like this machine that is sitting there. So I'm asking, there is a resolution on here, but I think there's some questions about what different options we have. I know the mayor has talked earlier or later, latter part of last week, about some different options that could be discussed at finance. But I'm looking for a motion so the City of Algoma can put our name on this machine.
Is it the same brand of what we have currently?
Yes, it is the same brand. It's an Elgin Pelican machine. It looks almost identical to the machine we currently have now.
Is the, does it present any recycling opportunities with the old one? I mean...
There is a trade-in value on the old one.
Oh, there is?
Yes, there is a trade-in value. If you look at your back sheet from McQueen, there's a list price, a trade-in value, and then the total purchase price of the machine.
Five thousand bucks?
Yes.
So it's, the old one is done?
It's, right now, looking at some different options with our old machine, there's two drive pumps in the machine. We're looking at probably around $50,000 to replace the two drive pumps in that machine that I think would be this year. So unfortunately, the $50,000 is about half of what could possibly come down the pipeline with that machine this year. I had an estimate of, to go through some stuff and bring that machine up that I felt comfortable running it another summer was just below $100,000.
Is it budgeted?
It's in the capital outlay.
That is correct.
But I want to talk at Finance and Personnel about different options because we keep taking away from the capital outlay, and all of a sudden, our capital outlay is down to nil. So I want to look at different options on how we can finance both the truck and the sweeper. But that's at Finance and Personnel. All he needs is the authorization to go ahead and say, we're going to take it.
Okay.
So is anybody at home?
Is that pending the options, Mayor, or is it...
Well, the option to, if he says, if we give him the okay, you're giving him the okay to buy it, we will then come up with how we're going to finance it.
Okay.
We have, there's different options to finance it. One, you could take it out of capital outlay. I really don't want to do that.
Right.
So then we can look at leasing it.
Oh, those options, not vehicle?
No, no, the option, no, no.
Vehicle options?
Right. You're approving purchasing this Pelican or whatever it is tonight. And then as far as how we're going to finance it, we'll talk about Finance and Personnel.
There was a motion by the committee to recommend either option one it was, or option three, which would have been taking it out of the capital. Whatever the Finance Committee or the council decides is best for the city at the time financially would be their recommendation, so.
Anybody at home have any questions of Matt?
No.
None? Okay. Hearing none, then I'd accept a motion to have the Public Works Director talk to the company and tell them that basically that we will take this street sweeper, and then we will look at financing, how we're going to finance it at the Finance and Personnel. Move by Jake.
Second.
Second by Scott. Roll call vote, please.
Meverden.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Gressel.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before I go into the Administrator's Report, I'm going to go back to item 7A, and I'm just going to read the proclamation for the Arbor Day in the City of Algoma. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling motion Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Wayne R. Schmidt, Mayor of the City of Algoma, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2020, as Arbor Day in the City of Algoma. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Adopted this sixth day of April, 2020. Along the line here, I know every year we planted a tree. I think it was the fourth graders or the fifth graders from each school. Last year, we planted one at St. Paul's, and I think the year before, we did too. We planted two years in a row there. But it was good to get the students out. We showed them how to plant a tree, how to properly plant a tree, and water, and so on and so forth. But because of the COVID-19, that will not take place this year, among a lot of other things that aren't happening right now. So we at least wanted to get the proclamation out. And again, I apologize for not having it right away in the beginning, but that was my fault, so. Okay, then I'm going to go on to the Administrator's Report. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. So the last page of your packet is the Administrator's Report. So first, I guess in a little bit of non-COVID-19 news. As you'll see in the minutes for the redevelopment authority, we, we're moving forward with looking at different options for the block by the Denny's supermarket that was declared blighted a couple of months ago. So since then, I and the county administrator have had our conference call with the Department of Administration regarding the CDBG and the close application. And we're continuing to work with the county on the application process for that, as well as looking at acquiring some competitive monies through a competitive grant as well to increase our total available money for that. As far as the election goes, updated numbers today. And by the way, we are still having an election tomorrow. I don't know if you've been following that, but we are having an election tomorrow. So far, we've received 705 absentee ballots were issued, which is, I'm assuming now over 40% of our total registered voters. We're going to be staffing the polling location with library personnel and city employees who have been trained by our clerk to do that. There is going to be plenty of sanitizer and sanitation equipment available, and we'll be heavily sanitizing everything. Both paper and electronic ballots will be available, but we're going to be strongly encouraging the use of the electronic ballot because with that volume of absentee ballots we've had, our goal is to, you know, we're a little bit short of supplies there, so we're trying to encourage the use of the electronic machine. And voters do have until, who received their absentee ballots but have not returned them yet, do have until the end of the day on the 13th. What time is?
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM, on Monday, the 13th, so a week from now, to get those in. 4:00 PM, on Monday, the 13th, so a week from now, to get those in. So that is the election update. And then onto some COVID-19 business. Since this has all started, we set, we put together a group for stakeholders within the city to kind of stay on top of this. So that includes myself, some managers within the city, the nursing home director, the utility manager, and people of that sort, and the library director, just to kind of stay on the same page with everything. Effective March 18th, we restricted city hall access, not prohibited it, but restricted it to kind of limit the number of people coming in and to encourage the social distancing. After the election, so effective this Wednesday, we are going to be closing city hall to the public and encouraging anyone to, if they need to come in and meet with staff, to call in and they will come in or use the drop box to drop off if they have a payment or an absentee ballot, because again, they have until the end of Monday to do that. We're implementing changes in the public works department and the Parks and Rec department to maintain the social distancing. And we're just continuing to monitor the situation through the county. And we've been preparing if and now, as you know, when, we had a confirmed case in the county. So with that, and I'll turn it over to Matt in a little bit to get into some of the details, but what we're looking to do is now, this week, we have, all of our public works employees are back, and I mean, they were last week as well, but they're all working their normal shift right now. We're going to make a priority of getting the tasks done that require three or all four of them, such as installing the docks at the marina. The reason we're doing that is because we're looking to, starting next week, split our shifts up. So we'd have two public works crew on at different times. So we'd have one shift, I believe, 5:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and then another shift from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM, just to kind of split them up. So everyone will still be working. They're 40 hours a week. They're just going to be doing split shifts. So I will turn over to Matt to go in any more details or if any member of the council has any questions about that.
Thank you, Jared. I guess just to clarify a couple of things, this is something that we've been talking about, discussing. Myself, the mayor, the administrator, the public works chair, and some that we feel like trying to keep them segregated or separated as much as we possibly can. With that being said, at that one o'clock shift period or shift change, we would look to the last probably half hour, kind of clean, sanitize everything as guys are getting out of vehicles, kind of like the way the police department here are doing things in between shifts. And then the same thing at the end of the day, end of the evening, as things get done towards the end of the day, then they would clean, sanitize, and get things ready for the guys to come back in in the morning. There will be times throughout this that, because of what's going on, that we will be working in groups of three or four, depending on if somebody has some scheduled time off or something like that. And I'd be just down to three guys. Those three guys would work a shift then together instead of having it split up. And we'll just do like we're trying to split guys up as much as we possibly can. But with the work that's going to be done down at the marina, there is going to be some contacting some guys in the same locations at times. With that being said, I'd take any questions from any council.
Matt, this is John.
Yes, John.
Yeah. With the CDC's new recommendations about masks or bandanas or covering the mouth, will you be having your staff using any masks or mouth covering?
I, we currently don't have any masks. I am working on getting masks, and I will be leaving it up to my employees that feel like they should have or be wearing them, leaving it up to them to wear them.
Is it the same two individuals that are always going to be working the swing shift?
No, they will be rotating. So we'll rotate because of everybody's home schedule is as well. I would rotate one week and then switch back and forth.
The current schedule now is six to two?
Three.
Six to three? Are there any concerns as far as what they're going to be doing for the, right away or at 5:00 in the morning or late at night?
Working on putting that together now, yes. That is a concern of what they're going to do from 5:00 in the morning to 6:00, 6:30, and then the same thing on the back end of the shift. We will, you know, schedule our maintenance, our indoor stuff. I still have wiring to be done on the docks and some stuff to be put together on the main dock system that's inside the shop. They'll currently be working on that on both ends of the shift, on the beginning of the day and then at the end of the day as well. And then start to rotate into some spring maintenance stuff that can be done.
Anybody else at home?
No, I think it's a good idea to separate them.
Eugene, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Matt, for the update. Appreciate it. Okay, last thing is the mayor's appointments and comments. I have no appointments, but I'd like just to make a few comments. Oh, sorry. Yeah, John, go ahead.
I wanted to get back to Jared on the election preparations. With the electronic machines, there's hand contact with the screen. That would mean that there'd have to be sanitization for each and every voter, correct?
Correct.
And the same question regarding masks and interaction with people coming in to vote for our poll workers. Do we have masks available for them?
We do have masks.
Yeah, for the staff, right?
For the staff.
Yeah, we have masks for the staff. And then as far as equipment goes for the public, the public are being asked to, they'll be grabbing a pen that they will be taking with them throughout the entire process and leave with them, so that they're only using the one pen and it doesn't stay here. And then we'll have a lot of hand sanitizer and alcohol wipes and things of that nature. So, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, since you don't know who's going to be coming in to vote, nobody has a right to do that, you know, and you have to look at their IDs and stuff. Just make sure they, if it's offered, that someone doesn't just grab it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, then just a couple comments on this COVID-19. Everybody's familiar what's going on. Really impressed on everybody for the social distancing. If you don't have to go out, please stay home. I mean, tomorrow's election, we encourage everybody to vote. We're going to try to take as many safety measures as we can. Our clerk, Jamie Jackson, has been spending a lot of time on preparing for this election. And hats off to her because every time she turned around, there was a different rule. First, we're having it, then we're not having it, then we're extending it. So she put a lot of hours in. But if you're home and you're listening to this and you're not feeling good, and you think you got the flu, don't come to vote. I mean, just stay home because we want to make sure that Algoma stays safe. We do have one case in Kiwanee County right now that was to the west of us, and we'd like to hopefully make sure that Algoma doesn't get any. I did get a letter the other day from a gentleman, but he did not put his name or phone number, so I can't reply to him. And I usually don't address letters that are not signed by anybody, but in the letter, the individual talked about being disabled and how hard it is now as far as finding somebody to get them around, get them to the grocery store, get them to the pharmacy. I want people to know that if you need groceries, you can call Denny's Super Value. They'll take your order. You can give your credit card and they will deliver. Same thing with the pharmacy. You can call the pharmacy, they will deliver if you need your prescriptions and you can't get out. And the other thing, if you happen to have an elderly person that's living next door to you, make sure you check on them. I mean, you don't need to go into their house, but at least give them a call or kind of monitor their house to make sure that there's movement, that they're getting their mail, they're getting their paper. Because right now, if something happens to somebody, you know, it could be a while before somebody actually finds out that maybe they're deceased. So we want to try to, safety, safety, safety. There's going to be some things that are going to be coming out in the next couple days that people are going to probably complain about, but it's not that we're just doing it for the sake of doing it. We're following the governor's orders. We're following the president's orders. A lot of these things are beyond our control, but we want to make sure that everybody stays safe. That's our ultimate goal, and we want to make sure our employees stay safe and every citizen. So I'm just asking you, if you're listening to this tonight, please practice social distancing. I know people need to get out. I mean, you go bananas sitting at home, and you want to go for a walk? Fine, stay here six feet apart, go for your walk, stay on the sidewalk, stay on the boardwalk. Don't go tramping all over the beach or every place else. So that's all I have to say. At this point, I would like then to turn it over to the clerk who has another comment.
I just want to add for the election tomorrow, if somebody does not want to come into the building, you can pull up outside in the back parking lot or along the curb and call us at our city hall phone number, which is 487-5203, and request for a curbside vote. It may take us five or 10 minutes to get out there, depending on how busy we are in here, but we will send two poll workers to your car. You still need to have an ID ready, just like it would be if you came inside, but you can vote from your car and then we will come in and put your ballot in the machine. So.
Is that possible to put some kind of signage out there since not everybody...
There's a sign on the doors if someone would get...
But I mean, out by the road? No?
Not exactly, no. It's something that's available for all elections though, so some people do know about it already. But there are signs on the front and back doors that if you have a fever or if you're experiencing any symptoms, we ask that you don't come inside and that you suggest or request a curbside vote.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Jamie. Anything else for the betterment of this meeting? Otherwise, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Moved by Jake. Moved by Lee. Seconded by...
Eugene.
Eugene. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you very much. Appreciate everything. Appreciate you people at home. Again, stay safe.